Good afternoon and welcome to everyone as well as our viewers on Wincam. Just want to thank Wincam as always for your support of our meetings. And I will call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of school committee at 6:01 PM, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So this is our first meeting of the fall school year and our first regular meeting in a little over a month. So we would like to welcome everyone back for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And this has been a little different than a normal year for us and has many of its own challenges, but all the same, we are excited for another fall back to school. You can also join us on Comcast Channel twenty-two or Verizon Channel thirty-eight, or you can watch via live streaming on Wincam. So tonight's agenda includes, first, we will have a student representative report. We will have recognition of our retirees from the two thousand and twenty-one school year. And public comment, followed by reports and discussion items, including central office relocation options and capital and building projects update. And then we will have action items around consideration of approval of updates to Title Nine policy, consideration of the central office relocation, consideration of a placeholder for the Fall Town Meeting warrant, consideration of acceptance of a gift of a book donation to the McCall Library, and a consideration of acceptance of a Rotary Club gift for a Gaga Pit for Morocco, followed by the Chair Report, the Superintendent's Report, future agenda items, the next meetings, and then adjournment. So with that, we will begin with our... And I would also like to welcome and introduce our new interim finance director, who is Mr. Peter Rowe. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all this year.
Good to have you here. I'm very excited that you're here. I'm very excited that you are here.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Can I put Dr. Hackett on the spot just to maybe make a few remarks about Mr. Rowe's background, just for the community who's watching?
Sure, absolutely. So, Mr. Rowe has been in the business of finance for quite some time with public schools. I believe, I'm not quite sure exactly where you got your start, but I know you were in the Boston Public School System and spent many years in Brookline Public Schools, or the Public Schools of Brookline, as they like to be called. Comes highly regarded, highly respected with many years of experience, has been doing some interim jobs for the last six years, five or six years?
Yeah, six years, yeah. I thought I retired back, and I guess it was two thousand and sixteen, but I've had an opportunity to work in Harvard and Lincoln Sudbury and Lexington and now Winchester. So it's very exciting to be back on the ground after a year of COVID relief, you know.
Well, we're glad that we were able to pull you out of retirement one more time anyway. So, so very pleased to have you here. We've had John Donazio, who was the former prior business manager for Winchester for several years, and John's been great over the course of the summer and still kind of working through the transition. So we're fortunate to have both of these gentlemen and looking forward to our work this year. So, thank you.
And thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
They made me sit through three or four meetings before. I got a name tag, just so you know, it's not personal. They just want to see if it's really going to stick.
Patience, patience.
Next meeting, you'll be upgraded to a blank one.
Yeah.
So now we will begin with our student report so that we can utilize our students' time most efficiently. And we would like to welcome back our student representatives from the Winchester High School School Council, Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage. Both are eleventh graders at the high school, and we look forward to their valuable input at the high, from within the school and from among students, especially as we start this school year. So Elle and Charlie, we would welcome you to the table, and please let us know how things are going so far.
Thank you so much for having us, guys. Really excited for our first real in-person school committee meeting.
So we would just like to start off by thanking you all for having us here, and we're very excited to be meeting you all. As we said goodbye to Dr. Evans and Ms. Whitmore last spring, we also want to mention how excited we are to be meeting Dr. Hackett and Ms. Rowe. We look forward to working with you both this year. We had a great start to the new school year. All of the twelfth, eleventh, tenth, and graders were very excited to welcome the new ninth grade students. We are all very happy to be entering this school year with a sense of normalcy. This year, our schedules are also on a six-day rotation with two wind blocks on days two and five. All grades are allowed to leave during the lunch block. Twelfth graders can also leave the building if they have a free block at the end or start of the day. One of the things that was greatly appreciated by all students was the return of our regular fall sports seasons. Many people attended the first games of the season, supporting the football, soccer, field hockey, and many other teams. The high school also had their annual club fair last week during one of our wind blocks. This fair gave all of the grades the chance to walk around and sign up for new clubs that interested them. It was a great success, and the ninth and tenth graders were very excited to finally attend the WHS Club Fair. Clubs are also meeting in person this year.
All right. So I'll pick up where Elle left off. We have our first student council meeting tomorrow night at seven-thirty. Unfortunately, the freshman elections have not happened yet, so we will not be joined by our new freshman representatives. And so far, we have a few committees and events planned out for the year. We plan on hosting Noda, Student Musical Bingo, Putting for Patience, as well as the pep rally. And we'll definitely keep you guys updated on any new committees that pop up later in the year. Moving on, Spirit Night is fast approaching, and it'll be held on the twenty-fourth, along with Picture Day, which is planned for November first. That about wraps it up. It's a little short today because we haven't been in school for very long. We hope to give you a little more information next week. Again, thank you so much for having us here tonight. We really hope that this report was helpful for you all, and please feel free to ask any questions.
Any questions from the committee?
So I have one. Can you talk a little more about the wind block changes and the new procedure with lunch and sort of being free to be off campus for more students? I'm assuming that's being really well received. But when Mr. Mahoney was here, when was that, May, June? It wasn't long ago. You know, we talked about some expectations that administration has of students and kind of welcoming some of these new privileges, if you want to call them that. So what's the reception been? And are students kind of meeting the expectations of Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. All students can leave now during the lunch block. It used to only be available for the eleventh and tenth graders, but after last year, I think that they found that it was very helpful to have, like, give them that open campus feeling. But for the rest of the school day, it is closed campus except for twelfth graders if they have an open end.
Yeah. Along, just to add on to that, I think overall, the wind block changes have been very well received. I mean, I would like personally to see more people using signups during wind block. I think we tend to see it more as a study hall, personally, just based on the response I've gotten from students so far. However, it's definitely helpful, especially with the people have felt almost like a COVID pileup from last year. They felt they didn't learn as much as they could have, and now they're learning more. So it's a change of pace, and I think students are really appreciating it.
Charlie and Elle, are students allowed to meet, are clubs allowed to meet during that wind block time? Are they finding that's a useful time to use for that, as well as the study hall?
I believe so. I'm not sure if any clubs have used that yet, but I do know that with Ms. Paradise, she's been opening up a lot of mentorship opportunities. So some of the eleventh and twelfth graders have been able to mentor the new ninth grade class during the wind block.
Nice.
Thank you.
How has it seemed for the incoming ninth graders?
I think so far, they've been very well received. I know we had a student council, almost event, last Thursday on wind block, where we had multiple members of the student council, and I think multiple members of the tenth, eleventh, or eleventh and twelfth grade go into freshman wind blocks and kind of coach them through what they might see this year. It was really fun. I mean, a lot of people just got to have interactions with upperclassmen, which were, which was nice because, especially for last year, the sophomores had almost no interaction with the now seniors. And I think, I think it's, I think it's going pretty well so far. I mean, it's definitely changed the pace from the last two school years they've had online.
That's great.
I just have one quick question. So, Elle, I think you mentioned Ms. Paradise, and she's the new dean of students at the high school. Are the students finding it useful to have that additional touch point as the school year has started? And how's that working out for you guys? And how is she interacting with you?
Yeah, I think she definitely has been very helpful. I think, like, for me personally, I also will email her sometimes if, like, I don't email the vice president or Mr. Mahoney, just because she helps, like, organize new events and other, like, leadership opportunities. So, yeah, I would say having her there has been very helpful.
Awesome. Terrific. Thank you.
So I thought of one more as well, Karen. So we have a unique year. This year, the federal government has extended some funding to allow more students access to lunch that maybe didn't have it in previous years. High school's unique because it's got that full kitchen and actually makes meals for, like, our elementary students. Give me a sense, what's happening at the high school? Is there, like, an increased volume of students who are actually getting lunch from Woodson's there, and are they able to keep up? Because that's a real change, kind of in patterns of usage, if you will.
Yeah. I would say most definitely, there's been a very large increase of people getting lunch, at least from my experience, what I've seen in my freshman year compared to now. It's unfortunate occasionally because I'll go to lunch block, I'll be there a little bit late, and you'll see a line that reaches back out to the doors in the back of the school near the Zen Garden, which is definitely a little aggravating, but I think overall it's really good because people are using the free lunch. Occasionally, people will get different options, which I don't know if our, which I don't know if they're covered by the free lunch. I know the hot meal always is, but there's definitely an increase, and I think that's a really good thing.
And you get a sense that the, is the Woodson staff doing their best to keep up? I mean, obviously, things are going to get better and more efficient a little bit with time. Do you see some improvement in just the first few days of school in that regard, or is it a little too early to tell?
I'd say it's slightly too early to tell. I mean, they always have enough food for everybody, so even if I'm at the end of the line, I will have enough food.
Okay.
It's more of just a minor inconvenience having to wait. I wouldn't say they're keeping me to the end of the lunch in the line. They're being pretty efficient.
So importantly, you feel like students have, they have food and they have time to eat it. That's what I'm most interested in. Yeah.
I sometimes will even wait for the line to kind of, like, die down a little bit, and I still have, like, twenty minutes. And they also go very quickly because I think, like, sometimes the food is already ready so they can just pass it out super quickly.
Got it. Thank you.
And I would just say that last week, I was able to be in the high school lobby briefly, and it was very exciting to see students at the tables and just talking for clubs or just informally or working on homework together. Just seeing that activity in the high school was, it was very refreshing and nice to see again. One other question. Are there new clubs that either of you are excited about or that you heard about that have started up this year?
I think one of the clubs was the Upcycle Club. That's new this year. Also, the Kindness Club. And then we also just have, like, the same clubs, like, Connected Commit is a big one and Best Buddies.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you very much to both of you, and as always, you are welcome to stay as long as you would like, or if you have homework and other things to get back to, we totally understand that, too. And we would look forward and welcome you to our next meeting as well.
All right. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Nice job.
Thank you. Okay. So next on our schedule, we actually have a recognition of our retirees. And in June, we had had to cancel our meeting at which we had planned to recognize our staff retirees. So as we kick off the start of this school year, we would like to take a brief moment just to circle back to this and acknowledge the staff who've contributed so much to our schools over their careers. So to that end, our principals will be saying a few words about each of the retirees from two thousand and twenty-one. And we have also prepared a small token of our appreciation, which is, dun, 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 a, in a little red box, a silver apple. Hold that, so you can see. And it is inscribed with, "In appreciation of your service and dedication to the children of Winchester."
And each retiree will receive one.
Yes. We will mail this towards the end of the week to each of them. So.
Beautiful.
I'll set that out for a little...
And also just, ooh and ah, but it has its purpose, too, for, you know, candy.
Has a, yes. Has a nice little design on it, so. So we will now have the principals come in one by one to introduce the retirees from their school.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you for having me. So, good evening. It's my honor and pleasure to recognize and celebrate the teaching career of Ms. Idene Hunt. As many of you know, Ms. Hunt began her teaching career here in Winchester at the Lincoln School in two thousand and six. Prior to that, Ms. Hunt also taught in Lynn, Massachusetts, at a parochial school. While at Lincoln, Ms. Hunt taught both kindergarten and fifth grade for a total of fifteen years. Ms. Hunt was known for her exemplary teaching, her strong dedication, and her love of her students and their families. Ms. Hunt also has a special connection to Lincoln and to the Winchester community because she also grew up here. Ms. Hunt is also known for her generosity, her kindness, and her wonderful sense of humor. Thank you, Ms. Hunt, for all you've done for the many students, hundreds of students at Lincoln School over the years. Idene, if you're listening, we hope that you will visit Lincoln School and visit often and perhaps come for one of your favorite cups of coffee that's flavored with pumpkin. We will miss you, and we wish you peace and happiness in your next journey. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Mrs. Plow. Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Right there. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So Beth Strilla is the principal at Lynch Elementary, and I'm here to talk about three of our retirees. Lynch has been blessed to be, have been graced with the presence and joy of Terry Maguire, Liz Cristo, and Chrissy Greco for over the past three decades. This is the time for all of us to mark a milestone, not only for them, but all of us at Lynch and in Winchester. We want to start by acknowledging with gratitude their selflessness and contributions to families, students, and colleagues. Mrs. Maguire has touched the lives of students and families alike with her positive energy, endless dedication, and innovation since nineteen eighty-five. Thirty-six years of countless memories, countless smiles, countless learnings, and countless acts of grace, and which she and Bumpy, for all of those, you know, Bumpy, our friend turtle, have spread across the school. Lynch also recognizes Chrissy Greco, who has spent thirty-three years calling Winchester home. Since nineteen eighty-eight, Ms. Greco has touched the lives of students at Lynch, Morocco, and VO. Her positive energy, attitude will be missed. And in closing, we would like to celebrate Liz Cristo, who has dedicated over a decade to students and families at Lynch. Her creativity and imagination has brought joy and new learning to students and staff alike. We want to wish all of our retirees a wonderful retirement. Know that you will be missed, but not forgotten. We've been so fortunate to have your expertise, your smiles, your joy of teaching and learning to rely on every day. Thank you, and may the next phase of your life be fun and adventurous. You'll be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Strilla.
Thank you, Beth.
Yes.
Now we have Mrs. Corbiere.
Hello. Thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Chrissy Tarantino. Ms. Tarantino started as a substitute teacher in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen eighty-seven in Winchester, working mostly in the, at the Lincoln, Morocco, and VO schools. She was so well thought of that she was offered a job at each one of those schools, and lucky for us, she chose VO. In September of nineteen eighty-seven, she started as a kindergarten teacher, and she has felt so blessed that she's had the honor of teaching in the same grade, at the same school, and essentially in the same classroom for thirty-four years. Vincent Owen has been her second home as well as, for her as well as for her family. Mrs. Tarantino's husband, Joe, has enjoyed many social teacher gatherings over the years, forging many friendships with our staff and their extended families. Her daughters have spent many years helping mom in the classroom, and Mrs. Tarantino is now looking forward to spending her time doing many of the activities that she enjoys, like visiting Cape Cod and spending time with her girls and her family. Mrs. Tarantino will forever be in the hearts of our VO students and families, and we miss her greatly. Thank you, Chrissy. And now I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Mrs. Janine Fremont. Mrs. Fremont started teaching in Winchester in nineteen eighty-seven, right after she completed her Masters of Education program at the PBD College in Vanderbilt. She began her teaching career as a kindergarten and second grade teacher at the Lynch, Morocco, and Lincoln Schools, and in nineteen ninety-seven, she came to VO where she stayed. Mrs. Fremont has taught kindergarten at VO from nineteen ninety-seven to last year, two thousand and twenty-one. Mrs. Fremont has taught kindergarten in second grade, but since nineteen ninety-seven, she's been at VO teaching kindergarten. Like Mrs. Tarantino, Mrs. Fremont has had many students from the same family and has even taught a few of the younger teachers within the district. Mrs. Fremont has shared that her favorite part of her day is sharing stories with her students. She has long believed that forging a special connection between those who you share a story with is a truly, is truly a special gift and one that she has given to countless students. Mrs. Fremont is looking forward to spending her free time doing things that she enjoys, such as gardening, antiquing, and spending time with her sons and her family. Thank you, Janine. And to Chrissy and Janine, the entire VO school wishes you all the best in the next chapter of your lives. You've given so much to so many, and now it's time to focus on yourselves. Thank you for your many years of service to our VO school community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Mr. Lynn from the McCall School.
Hello, everybody.
James.
Hi.
Good evening.
So as you know, I have a son who, over the summer, made every single member of his family watch every single one of the Marvel superhero movie that was his goal for the summer. My son is going places. And so superhero has been in my mind, and when I think about these five individuals who retired, I think of them as superheroes as well. So I would like to talk about each one of these McCall superheroes this afternoon or this evening. So first is Pam DiMario, our speech and language pathologist. She, her superhero power draws from her big heart, and she works with a lot of students who are difficult articulating what they have to say. And so very frequently, Ms. DiMario has been described as the person that has the uncanny power to hear what many students were unable to say and help them find their voices. Phyllis Greenspan is our clinical social worker. Her superhero power is best described by a colleague that wrote this about her. According to this particular colleague, she called Ms. Greenspan "the sparkly jewel that lights up the lives of many." Ms. Bonnie Huerken is our next McCall superhero. She was our guidance secretary before she retired. She is indeed a superhero of the guidance department. While guidance counselors take care of McCall students and their family, Ms. Huerken takes care of the counselors and all the other admin assistants. Our next superhero is Jane Sheehan, math teacher before she retired. Her superpower comes from her ability to break down complicated math concepts for all students to be able to access. But the most compelling memory I have of Jane was during our DC trip, and I remember there were, there was a girl during Last Evening Dance who was really upset about something that happened. I remember Ms. Sheehan taking her for a walk and just talking to her and making her feel better. So that's where Ms. Sheehan's superpower comes from. And also, she's a fabulous pillowcase maker. Mr. Kenny Tully, and he is indeed an iron man. "I'm ready to retire after working one day at middle school," and this man worked well over forty years. And not only is he a wonderful history teacher, he's done pretty much every single job that is there to do at McCall Middle School. He was a coach, he was a team leader, and he organized pretty much every DC trip that I can remember. So his contribution is immense. So congratulations to all five McCall superheroes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Mahoney from our high school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The retirees from Winchester High School would begin with Dorothy Duff. If you did not need special services, you might not have ever met Ms. Duff, but she was a dedicated speech and language pathologist working with many of our special education students, grades nine, through the post-grad program at WHS. Dorothy is one of the cornerstone in the special education department. She helped to establish the Paces Program for Social Pragmatics and Communication Students and has been a champion for so many students throughout the district. We wish Dorothy the best in retirement, as she was an unsung hero during her time at Winchester High School. Our next retiree is Tom Haver. Tom served as a math director from two thousand and four to two thousand and nineteen and as a teacher for the past two years. Under Tom's leadership as the director, the math department expanded its course offerings to include AP Stats, AP Computer Science Principles, AP Java, and many more courses. He also led the department in the development of integrated courses for grades nine and ten. Tom was a trusted advisor and confidant, including myself, to many at WHS. Then we have Bob Trackamas. Bob is best known for his love of teaching honors precalculus and his ability to make connections with students. He challenged students to reach their potential and incorporated real-life math applications into his lessons. He especially liked teaching bearings and probability, as well as preparing students for the SA II subject tests. Bob is an avid golfer, and he's been seen on the links many times since his retirement. Next, we have Gail Texan. Gail taught a wide variety of ninth and tenth grade courses over the past twenty years in the math department. She enjoyed working with students and encouraged them to think mathematically. She spent considerable time making sure her lessons were accessible and always brought her enjoyment of math to the classroom. Gail is looking forward to spending more time with her children and grandchildren, and rumor has it she has a one-way ticket to California. Last but certainly not least, we have Liz Angus. Liz was a thirty-year veteran teacher of physics. Her dedication to high standards and to helping students reach those high standards helped build the reputation of excellence that is Winchester High School. A lot of students found a kindred spirit in Liz, and they learned more physics because of that connection. What you may not know about Liz is that she is a very talented musician, and she hopes to play the keyboard and sing in her well-earned retirement. As Liz would say, "Just ride the wave." And to editorialize a little bit, I was interviewing a nursing candidate on Monday, who was a two thousand and seven graduate of Winchester High School, and she cited Ms. Angus for calming her fears of physics and getting her into the class and thriving in the class. And she, in the interview, she made a point to bring up Ms. Angus. So you know that you're making an impact when people are still talking about what you did for them, even in your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. And then we also would just like to recognize Ms. Frida Cannavan, who had served thirty-two years in the district as the executive assistant to five superintendents. And she had the ability to work with ease and grace under pressure with parents, community members, and many school committee members at many, many meetings. So thank you, Frida, for your dedication. And finally, we would also like to acknowledge Dr. Judith Evans. We are grateful to her for her dedication over her six years to the Winchester Public Schools and also over her long career. She played an integral role in school building projects in town and supported students and faculty in social, in social emotional awareness with the later secondary school start times, and also worked for more inclusion and diversity in our curriculum. She led us untiringly through the most difficult year we have faced in public education, and we are grateful... and we are grateful to you, Dr. Evans, for all that you have accomplished in your time here in Winchester. So on behalf of the families and children of Winchester, we thank all our retirees for their long service to the Winchester school community, and we wish them the best in all their new and varied adventures. Mr. Nixon.
I just want to be sure we didn't miss Karen Wilkerson, who's a pre-K teacher at Lynch, maybe because Sarah Casey couldn't be with us tonight. So I just want to put in a plug. As a Winchester parent, two of my three kids went to the Lynch preschool. My youngest had the pleasure of being in Ms. Wilkerson's classroom, and I recognized her immediately because my oldest was there many years ago. I saw her in the classroom, and I know, I know she was really a trusted friend and advisor to many of the younger teachers that came into Lynch and just had a wonderful way and steady hand with all the kids in the building. So on a personal level, I want to wish Karen Wilkerson a wonderful retirement as well.
Thank you very much. And I might have missed this one, but I thought, also on the list, we have Ms. Lisa Fleming, who is an OT in the district, and we would also like to congratulate her for her service into the district. Okay, so now we will move on to public comment. It is now six-thirty-two, and I will just read the usual statement that "public comment shall..." Be for a period of twenty minutes and is not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between individuals and the community, I mean, and of the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. So any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or their administrator, or administrators. So I'll just comment that we've been working with our administrative team and with WinCam to make our meetings as productive and efficient as possible, and this includes public comment. So the committee has been committed to maintaining an option for remote public comment, and we had said at the beginning that we would tweak this process along the way as we came to understand it. So in working with our team to streamline this process, we have landed as follows. So we will offer in-person public comment, and our children and staff are all back in school, and we, school committee, are committed to meeting in person as long as public health deems it safe to do so. But if you are unable to be physically present, we will offer the option to register in advance by six PM Monday, the night before the meeting, and we will then send you the Zoom link. This option is already available on our publicly posted agenda. So this will help ensure that people can be heard in person or remotely, and it will also serve to keep us in a timely order. We will continue to ask remote participants to turn on their cameras, give their names and addresses, and this is consistent with our in-person process. And as always, another avenue is to email us with your comments that can be read into the public record. So for today, no one has registered in advance of our meeting, so we will proceed directly to in-person public comment.
And I checked the hallway, and there is no one waiting in the hallway for in-person public comment.
So we also have nobody in the hallway for in-person public comment. I did receive one email from Jack Lemarche, who is Chair of the Winchester Historical Commission, and he had requested that we read this into the record. So I will do that. So, "Dear Chair Bolinesse, On behalf of the Winchester Historical Commission, I commend the efforts of the Winchester School Committee to preserve the historic Sanborn Carriage House. For the past ten years plus, the commission has worked with the school committee, most especially Chris Nixon and the Winchester Historical Society in pursuit of a permanent, long-term use of, that would save the building. So I am pleased to know that the TAPE architects' proposal seeks to do just that through a viable, actionable proposal to renovate it and convert it for use as the central administrative offices for Winchester Public Schools. In particular, I was pleased to see that TAPE proposal repeatedly and correctly refers to the structure as historic, worthy of preservation. To that end, the Historical Commission hopes that the school committee, select board, and ultimately town meeting endorses and funds this plan. I look forward to doing all that I can as an individual member of the community and in my official capacity with both the Historical Commission and as a town meeting member to support this effort and to continue to work with the school committee to assure a mutually beneficial outcome that serves the needs of Winchester schools while preserving one of our town's most important historic buildings. Sincerely, Jack Lemarche, Chair of the Winchester Historical Commission." And with that, I will close public comment.
Ms. Bolinesse?
Yes. Mr. Hopcroft.
Just a couple of comments on, on the change. Yeah, I just looked and see that it's noted in the official notice for the meeting, which I, I appreciate. Optimally, I think it would be good for us to communicate that we're going to have a change like this at a prior meeting, because I, if I were planning to give public comment via Zoom, I would have shown up shortly before the meeting and gone to the website and not necessarily looked at this. So that's one point, but today we're making that announcement so people know now. The other is, is I think we should have parity between the, the virtual and the in-person. And I just looked at the registration form, and I would applaud you for adding a description of the topic on which, on which you wish to comment, because it allows us to, you know, should there be a deluge of people on a particular topic, you know, have a separate special meeting for that or do something. It's a very good idea to know in advance, to be able to budget our time and be able to hear everyone. I would just ask that maybe we consider doing that for the in-person people as well, that they have a, they give notice that they want to present public comment at the meeting twenty-four hours in advance or whatever the, whatever, however you've written it for the, the people on Zoom, because you shouldn't disadvantage, you know, part of our community and not the other part of the community. And I think there is a benefit of having, of knowing what the topics are that, that people wish to talk about. So I do, I do very much support this. I just think we should do it for everyone.
Can I just add on? Thank you for letting me look over your shoulder. I had not done what Mr. Hopcroft did, to actually open up and see what it looks like.
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
Maybe just a footnote to explain why, you know, why we're asking about the topic, just so people understand that it's not, it's not because we wish to be biased in any way. And, you know, certainly pre-COVID, I know former chairs were good about saying, well, you know, we have X amount of time, so, you know, if you begin to hear that your point was expressed by others, maybe take a backseat, let others and so forth. So I, I, I also applaud that field, but it would maybe be good just so people understand why we're asking.
I might also just say, if, if we want people to give their street address, you might ask that as well, because you could capture that information offline.
And I believe, Ms. Bolinesse, the need to register twenty-four hours in advance was a technological one. Isn't, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what you said at first, which is the difference between in-person public comment and remote public comment, to be able to not stumble through like we did at our last meeting. It's helpful to be able to, but we're happy to talk more about that with you offline as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it strikes me that there are ways. If, if we wanted to have people to make the Zoom available in real time, we could. We have in the past. But, but I actually think this is a better way to, to go. I, you know, when I sat on the Board of Higher Ed, people had to give notice if they wanted to do a public comment in advance, and so we knew before we came in, we could budget our time better. And, and if there, there was a burning issue in town, you know, we could, we could find a way to, to, you know, have a separate opportunity for those people to be heard. So I do, I do think it's a better way to do it. I just think there should be parity between the, the virtual and the in-person options. Because it's not, I don't think it's a choice all the time. I think it's people's circumstances dictate whether they can do one or the other. And so, that's it.
Yes, and that is what we are working towards, for sure. Okay, so with that, I will move us on to reports and discussion items. It is six forty PM, and we will begin with a continuation of the discussion around central office relocation. So this was discussed last week by school committee at our September ninth special meeting, and at that time, we had a presentation by TAPE architects on the carriage house option with some comparison to a new Lynch Elementary School. So in addition to Dr. Hackett and Mr. Nixon of the school committee, Mr. Jay Nardone, Chair of the EFPBC, the Educational Facilities and Planning Board Committee, will be joining, Planning Building Committee, will be joining this evening with some commentary and/or questions for the committee regarding this topic.
Can I take the liberty, as Jay is making his way to the table? Can, I'd like to introduce this gentleman who never seeks the spotlight and is usually, you know, behind the scenes, but has been on the EFPBC, Jay, for at least twelve years.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
Ambrose.
And, you know, when, when the EFPBC really gets into the weeds on school projects, it is a real heavy lift, and Jay is, you know, from time to time, people miss meetings. I've never known Jay to miss a meeting. He's just very, very insightful, really appreciate his demeanor, especially when the going gets tough and there are difficult problems to solve, and, you know, sometimes tempers can flare. Jay is just an absolute steady hand. Jay is the Vice President of Nardone Electric Corporation, so he's a very experienced institutional contractor and has a lot of familiarity with institutional building design and construction, as well as, you know, cost estimating and so forth. So Jay is someone who kind of lives it and breathes it every day. And, and his firm has also, you know, done some work even here in town, so that's always appreciated. So I'm glad that, that Jay had an interest in being with us. He's had a chance, Jay, you've seen the hundred-and-thirty-page report. You've seen the presentation on Thursday. And I in particular thought this was a great opportunity. With Lynch beginning to get started, we're going to see more of the EFPBC. We will have community meetings, you know, we will engage a programmer and a visioning consultant and so on. So it's a great opportunity really for the committee to kind of put a name with a face as Lynch gets started. And, you know, Jay, my understanding is you certainly have some observations that you could make about, not just in general design and construction, but, you know, working with the MSBA. So, yeah, thank you, Karen.
I think you hit it both. If we're going to do the project, and it is needed, I would say, from all these projects since Ambrose, dealing with MSBA, they're not going to fund the project, and it becomes a mess trying to, the budgeting, try to break out an item that isn't funded and being part of an override or whatever. Even dealing with them in general, square footages, everything. If we could take this project away from the Lynch, it, there's a lot of advantages. They hit a lot of them on TAPE's presentation as far as security and other areas like that. And restoring a, you know, a beautiful site, like the carriage house, to get that out there, if it does fit, if it works program-wise, and get it away from the Lynch and get it out of the MSBA and let us control it with the school committee and the EFPBC, there's a great, I mean, you kind of ask for better committee of knowledge and, and get it going.
And on that note, Jay, so obviously, if the school committee should decide to, you know, locate central office with Lynch, the EFPBC has a role, because I think, as we all understand, that's basically our school building committee. But I want to give you the opportunity to sort of share with the school committee, if, if the preference is to go to the carriage house, can you sort of speak to the EFPBC's sort of interest and ability to, to manage that as well? We had some EFPBC members at the high school last week, so that's why I brought it up.
Right. I mean, we have the avail, we can do it. We meet whenever necessary, every other week right now, but we've gone to weekly when we have to. We've, we've been through plenty of these projects already, just from start to finish. So bringing it on is not an issue, going through the budgetary and taking it from where you've left it. It's not a problem, we're taking it on. And, and quite frankly, it would be easier for us to man that as its own project than trying to fit it in with Lynch. Just going through the high school with, dealing with the MSBA on gym and areas that the, they didn't agree with the square footages we were dealing with, you know, classrooms, stuff that was existing. Made no, no sense at all that they wouldn't fund a less expensive classroom just because it was more square footage. The rhyme or reason doesn't make sense. So for us, it would be easier to get this out of the Lynch and, and run on its own and, and get it going too. The timeline would be much quicker to get it, get it underway.
So I thought with, with Jay here tonight, there was another point that, you know, I failed to make last week that I think is an important one to make, that typically, every once in a while, the school committee advocates for and welcomes funding for certain key capital projects, but, but we only take it so far. We just sort of begin to move the football. So most recently, this was at McCall, where we'd had our Phase One and Phase Two expansion. So in that instance, the school committee, and this was coming right out of the master plan, we actually sought funding and we engaged an architect, Flansburgh, built a working group that included representatives from the EFPBC. But the EFPBC had its hands full at that time, kind of wrapping up the high school project. So the school committee did a space programming exercise, did a schematic exercise to get sort of a vision of what this project could be. Will it work? How might it fit? What might it cost? And then we kind of used that progress, which was really a step beyond schematics. It was really quite detailed, to then go and advocate for funding. So for Phase One, you know, we did not need a debt exclusion override. That was a little easier to manage. That was about a million and a half dollars for Phase Two. That was closer to eleven. But there was a handoff to the EFPBC, and my expectation is that if, should the school committee opt to designate the carriage house, that remind the committee, and this is actually part of our discussion later tonight under Capital and Building Projects Update, we're asking for an additional fifty-seven thousand dollars for some supplemental funding to basically take what is a schematic design with a cost estimate, take it one more step further, to be especially confident of those numbers. If there's opportunities to reduce the cost, we would do that. But I really see that exercise as something that the EFPBC can help with, because there are engineers and architects there around the table. That that's really, that is the handoff, frankly. If there should be interest and support of moving it forward, we would kind of basically take what TAPE has done now and then ask the EFPBC to, to move it forward, that, that one additional step, which I think would be helpful, although the, the big left, of course, is figuring out how you pay to actually do the work. But should we be successful there, you certainly would want the EFPBC to be familiar with the project and the documents and so on.
And make sure the systems, like you said, the architects, engineers, mechanical, go through and make sure we're, we're getting what we really want for the end use of the, of the school committee and offices.
So Karen, you know, Jay's seen a lot of projects through on our behalf in Winchester, and he's happy to take questions from, you know, school committee members, superintendent, anyone, if, if there are questions, whether it's about, you know, a carriage house option or maybe just thoughts about conceptually working with the MSBA on Lynch or all of the above.
Okay, so I will open it up to questions from our members. Mr. Hopcroft.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I don't actually have a lot of questions, because I feel like what I've heard has been stacked very much in the direction of the carriage house. But I guess that begs the question of, are there reasons that you can see why the carriage house wouldn't make sense that, that haven't been presented or why Lynch would be a better solution? Because it feels like the preponderance goes the other way.
I don't see anything why Lynch would be a better option. I, I mean, of course, a, a newer building than the carriage house would always be a better option with, you know, a shell that we're, we're renting a shell, but that doesn't exist in Winchester. You know, a vacant office or a shell buildout where it's already up would be a better option. But you, we are given somewhat of a frame to deal with. We're dealing with some sort of an envelope. The condition of it is in the report. It's in the ground. It has a foundation. There's a lot of advantages to it. I, I don't see any advantage with going into the Lynch. Just putting an office in a school and bringing the traffic, security, and dealing with the MSBA, I don't see, it's the same square footage. It would be added to the school or it would be added in the carriage house. So I don't see any advantage to put in the Lynch. But if you're saying the, the carriage house, is it the only option? If we had a commercial building in town that could be used for office space, that'd be a great option too, but it, it just doesn't exist in our town that I, that I know of anyways.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I was just going to request, Ms. Bollinay, to say, could Mr. Nardone please just stay with us during our discussions so if there are questions that we come up? Because I think we may seek his opinion on some things that we're discussing as we move along through our discussion of Carriage House in Lynch.
Yes, that is what I was hoping.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's not, not a problem.
You mean tonight or moving forward?
Right now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we should probably be clear, I mean, we said this last week, that, that although we could make a decision tonight, we don't have to make a decision tonight. And we certainly wanted to welcome some public feedback. I want to acknowledge and maybe other questions have come through the superintendent or the chair. We've received, that I'm aware of, I think, seven questions in writing. They're great questions. I mean, some of them are, you know, detailed questions about the value of one thing versus the value at Lynch, some MSBA questions, questions about foundation and so forth. So what I hope we can do is just sort of collect, collect those, fire those back to the team and then perhaps, Ms. Bergstrom, we sort of incorporate those questions in the answers into the packet for the meeting on the twenty eighth. And that way, members of the public who are asking questions can be confident that we saw the questions and we have some answers and, and we're all just that much better sort of informed, you know, when we make a decision. Can I just also say, I, I didn't know that Mr. Lemannajay had sent in a statement, so that's nice of him to do that, but I just want to clarify for the record, I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the high five from Jack, but I, just to be clear, I feel like all along, really what I've been doing as sort of the legacy school committee member is just ensuring that we were following through on a process that from time to time, we've said we would do. So, you know, what we're doing now is what we said at town meeting in the spring of eighteen, we needed to do. And when we went to town meeting and asked for the money to do that, it's because we had said at the master plan level, this would be our preferred option, but we need to study it carefully and we need to do a space program. And even once we do that, we need to compare it to a Lynch or a Morocco, because we were hopeful that someday we'd be doing that with the MSBA. And even that exercise, you know, at the master plan came from conversations in 2012. So I feel like all along, I, I've simply from time to time, wanted to be sure that we're kind of staying the course. And I think if the outcome of TAP A's evaluation had been that the Carriage House would cost, you know, twelve million dollars and Lynch would cost three, we, I don't think we'd be sitting here having this conversation right now.
Right.
So, you know, cost matters, timeliness matters, you know, is it a fit? Does it really work like we thought it would? That obviously matters. And so I think we really needed to have gone through that analysis. And now that we've done that, I think what we've come away with is, on a, on a construction cost basis, they seem to be very similar. From a timing point of view, they're kind of not, again, we have to find the funding, but we could certainly pull off central office at the Carriage House two years prior to Lynch. From a process point of view, one can argue Lynch is a little bit easier, I put that in air quotes, because there's just one question. So for those who don't understand this, if, if, if the MSBA should agree that we could include central office in Lynch, it doesn't mean it's a separate ballot question. It's still one ballot question. It's one debt exclusion override. How we handle the accounting and everything, which Jay was describing how much he enjoyed at the high school, is really just something that the EFPBC and, you know, Meg White, you know, kind of have to, to work through. So I feel like, I feel like the design team certainly came forward with all the information that we asked them to present to us. And it's kind of hard to push them a little, a little further beyond what they've done, but we certainly continue to welcome questions. And as I said, I think we've, we've gotten some good ones.
So I have a question for, I'm going to throw it out there to Mr. Nixon, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Nardone, whoever wants to take this one. So one of the concerns that I have heard about Lynch is that the build, the central office would need to be attached to the Lynch building and that might offer a security concern. I mentioned the other night and I still have similar concerns, security concerns with Ambrose being so close to the Carriage House. It's still within proximity of that building. I think the security concerns are just as valid at Ambrose as they are at Lynch. I'm wondering if, if it is part of an MSBA product, project at Lynch though, does it have to be attached to the building? Or if there was space on the site, could it be a separate building on the same site built at the same time, the way the Carriage House is at Ambrose?
So I, I, I'm happy to take my first crack at that and would certainly ask Frank to weigh in because you've got a lot of MSBA experience in your other districts. So just to be clear, the, so the, the, the security issue kind of plays in a couple of ways. In the first sense, and this goes back to conversations, you know, we had a couple of years ago, what I believe this committee is still unanimous on is that, you know, we wouldn't want to go back to the way it once was at Lynch, meaning that if you had to see Dr. Hackett and you were buzzed, if Aaron buzzed you in, you had a free run of the school.
Yep.
So that's, that's the old, that's the pre Stonemans Douglas, pre Newtown world and we're not going to, we're not going to do that again. So the consequence of that isn't that it's inherently wrong or dangerous, you know, to have central office in a school building. It simply recognizes that it almost needs to be a building within a building. So when you, when you say attached, it might, one might look at a design solution and say, I see an elementary school and I see a central office and it looks detached. That might be how the design manifests itself, but it doesn't have to be. You might also have a scenario where, you know, it appears to be one building, there just happens to be a door over there. You go in that door, you find yourself in a sort of self-contained space program that addresses those kind of security issues. So that means no shared spaces, no common egress, entry points, you know, bathrooms, you know, vertical circulation and so forth. So this is why, you know, Jay was saying, it's eighty-one hundred square feet whether it's here or there. So that just sort of speaks to, to that issue. As far as whether or not the MSBA would permit us to do something separate, given their, their statements to us already that, and they've cautioned us, that we should not assume that they will allow us to put it in the building. They would, they'll think about it carefully. They do make that decision with some districts and with others, they don't. I would be, I'd be surprised if they would allow us to, to build a separate, you know, literally a separate physical plant for central office. I don't know that there's any precedent for that, but I've not asked them that question. I think that that would just be really unusual. The architects, so we will have a Lynch update, I hope, on the fourteenth, but the submission deadline has come in and we've actually had ten submissions from some fantastic and talented design firms, so we're very excited by that. They understand, all of them, that we're looking at the central office question and that it, it might be Lynch or it might be the Carriage House. None of them have either suggested the separate concept and, or in terms of kind of presenting their relevant work, have they shared with us, you know, kind of what you're describing? The shorter answer is, I mean, I would have to ask them. I know, Dr. Hackett, what you would want to add?
It's a, it's an interesting question. I've, I am not aware that that has ever been done. And if you think about it, their interest is in, they build schools.
Right.
So if they were to allow us to put central office in Lynch, in the Lynch project, their interest in that is the impact on the actual school facility.
Right.
Everything from flow within the building to entries and exits to security to actual site. My guess would be that they would have the same interest if it was detached. So they're not going to pay for any of it anyway.
Correct.
There would be potentially some economies of scale or some cost saving that we might be able to tie the central offices into the heating plant, the HVAC system, the electrical system of the actual school that would be separate. But whatever we do is going to be all locally funded anyway. I think their interest would be, what would be the impact on the site? And that they would have a say in.
Right.
In terms of traffic flow, safety, utilization of the outside spaces, potentially any kind of just site work costs that might, that that might impact on the Lynch school project. So I guess the cleanest way that I would think about it, and we can certainly ask the question, first, I'm not aware that it's been done, they, but they don't care about how much money, what it looks like, if it's anywhere else, even if it's on the same site, but they do care about the school.
Mm-hmm.
And making sure that the, any kind of impact is, is not, does not affect the school in a, in a negative way.
So that would lead directly into a follow-up question for me then. So a cost we haven't figured into the Carriage House then, if we're self-funding it and building a building there, is we would have to then fund studies on traffic flow, security and all the effect on the Ambrose building if we're going to put it at the Carriage House? Whereas if we put it at Lynch, all those costs of worrying about the new building in the central office would be built into the MSBA project?
I don't know the answer to that directly, but I'm assuming that they would peel off a portion, some kind of percentage of the cost of anything that we do that they could tie directly back to the central office construction.
Right.
And all of that would then be at a premium that MSBA would charges for any kind of these, any, any project that, that they're, they're involved in. I say premium from the standpoint that they are very specific about.
Right.
Right.
But it's costs we haven't considered in this total project cost that we received from TAP A the other day, because we would still need to do the security assessment, the traffic flow assessment, all of the things that would be part of a new school building project, we would need to be done for this new building at Carriage House.
I'll step out of that one because I don't know local requirements.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow you totally, but, so I think there are two things maybe we could clarify. The question that was posed to Charlie last week was if we'd done a traffic study. So that literally means like you have counters out there, so you're looking at how many cars are coming in and out and at what, where's the peak period? What's the peak flow? And so he, they have not done that. In this instance, as a part of his response though, he was sort of speaking to how many people are reasonably expected in that building? When do they come into work in the morning?
Right.
And what he was trying to express is that he didn't see that that was going to have a significant impact on pickup and drop off. What I, what I am interested in though is, we, I think we would need to understand how does pickup and drop off work at Ambrose? And as I think you're aware, there has been, about a year and a half ago, the town got a risk assessment done of the entire town that includes the schools.
Yep.
And there are some recommendations from that consultant, which, you know, I, I only learned about recently, but through the capital process. So I think we will, we'll certainly look forward to having conversations with, with Dr. Hackett and Peter and others and maybe bring that forward to school committee. But there are some recommendations in there about sort of formalizing pickup, drop off procedures. And I think as a consequence of kind of looking at that, if there are things that we can do to improve that, we certainly would want to. I want to be clear though, that TAP A did look at, because this was in the master plan, this suggestion that could we find another curb cut, for instance, off of High Street, separate and apart from the one that we have at Ambrose? So Warner Larson, who's the landscape architect, who was, also was the landscape architect on VO, looked at that actually very, very carefully. And the grades there are just very difficult. And if you simply stand on High Street and just look, you, you can sort of get it, the grades are tough. They looked at other alternatives in terms of moving through the site and felt that there just weren't really any viable solutions. However, we did commit to the society that, given the area that's kind of suggested by the lease for future parking expansion is the same area that they were separately exploring a few years ago, we would endeavor to work with them to come up with a plan that not only kind of maximizes the parking, but even within that, one needs to define parking and also drive lanes, right? So you actually have circulation in one area along one edge or you don't. And that, I think, also has a sort of safety or security component to it. In other words, how you design that, given that there are students on campus, matters. And I think that would absolutely be, you know, entertained. But I don't, I don't see that affecting the project cost, given the scale of the work.
Right, but I guess what I was hearing from Mr. Nardone, I, that he was seeing as a disadvantage, I see as an advantage, is that when you build a new building from scratch and if the central office was on that site, that you would get all of these, you would be forced almost by the MSBA as part of the process to look at the impact of the central office on the school building. You would be, you would be required to look at the safety issues surrounding that. You're required to look at traffic flow. And we didn't include any of that, those kind of costs in our study plan for the Carriage House. The impact on the Ambrose community, the impact on that educational environment, the impact on that traffic flow, the impact on all of those things that when we're building a building up from scratch, we're going to have to look at. But we should be doing it if we're putting essentially a new building on the Ambrose site, because right now, it's an empty, it's the equivalent of an empty lot.
I think, if I could interrupt the, they did at the end of their budget have a lot of soft costs that come with, with a construction job, that those, usually those fees roll into. But rolling back to even our most recent job as the high school, the fields were not funded by MSBA.
Right.
And they drew right down the line as the architects always working on the field versus working on the high school. Even every bid, everything had to be broken down. So the, they, no matter where it went, they will not let it get covered as part of the job. So you're right, there, you have to make sure there's enough money in there. Looking, that's, that's a very high level budget that they've done. I've gone through it a few times.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's give and take all over it and that's the way they do it. It's square foot numbers. So there's going to be room to iron those items out probably, especially as they get into the next round and, and find out what mechanical systems they're using, what grade finishes they're using and such. There's going to be money moving around, but they do have contingencies in there that would go to traffic studies and all different items that you're going to need.
Right, because I also believe as a town, we committed to doing traffic studies anytime we do a school building project. And we got hit with quite a high fee for those when we did the McCall project.
Right.
So I just want to make sure we're accounting for that as part of Carriage House, because if we're doing Lynch, that's going to be part of the Lynch project. So when we're putting a building there, that building is already going to be included in that work. But if we're doing Carriage House, that's going to be a separate cost.
So you'd be pleased to know that the Lynch estimate that we throw around out there actually has a specific allocation for just what you described, which is that new town policy that the select board voted. I think the philosophy around the Carriage House was, it, it's an existing building. The last time the Carriage House was occupied, it was a preschool and it was packed with kids. And there was more traffic coming to the Carriage House than there would be if central office occupies the Carriage House. So it, the, the amount of cars that come there obviously are a direct reflection on the usage and the tenants of the building, but we would expect, as I said earlier, you know, most people are going to be arriving there before the school bell rings. There is some come and go during the day, of course, but we didn't really imagine that that would have much of a direct impact on the pickup and drop off procedure. It's more really just an acknowledgement that when it comes time for drop off, there are some parking spaces back there that already have cars in them. And that's actually kind of important. I mean, what's the consequence of that? So we got to be sure we have space for teachers and then if the society wants to have an event during the day, they need space and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
And as Jay was talking, I was, I was just trying to look through the detailed estimate to see if we actually had something in the line item. I agree with Jay, there are tremendous number of allowances there that sort of get us from the construction cost to the soft cost. So that's something we would obviously want to look at a little more carefully in design development in terms of being clear what those allowances and contingencies are for.
Chris, could you clarify on the parking? Right now, how many spaces are there at Ambrose that are for the use of the school? And then what would that number be with this project? Would that number be steady? Would it increase? Would it decrease?
That's a great question. So I've never gone to count how many spaces there are, like in the whole parking lot there. A quick comment, there are fewer spaces there today than there were when the building opened in two thousand and six, because in two thousand and nine, we dropped two modulators in the back of the building and, and we did the same thing at Morocco. So I believe, Jay, when we put the modulators in there, we, I think we lost.
We took parking spaces.
We lost some parking spaces. So that was sort of the consequence of that. What I can tell you, what I can't, so what I can say is sort of relevant to your question perhaps, is that there is a lease. You've heard us talk about this lease. So once upon a time, the school department controlled the entire Ambrose campus. At some point, and I can't tell you when, the, back in the, certainly the seventies and the early eighties, central office, main home was actually at the Sanborn House, like the mansion itself, and they moved on. At some point, the school committee surplused kind of the back half of the site. So there is an imaginary line, there's, there's a huge mature, I don't know, I think it's an oak tree, Michelle, or a maple, there's a big tree.
Yeah.
In this green field kind of between Ambrose and Sanborn. There is a line, a property line now basically, that is perpendicular to High Street that kind of runs towards the neighborhood. And so if you stand on High Street, you have Ambrose to the left, the Carriage House is sort of to the back but to the left, and everything to the right is town property. But long after that surplus was made, then the historic society came to the town and sought to engage in a long-term historic preservation lease. Would the town consider letting them call Sanborn House their home in exchange for a painstaking sort of restoration of the property? And that came to town meeting, probably ten or twelve years ago now, and that passed. But what's interesting is, out of that big parcel of land that I described, that the town now controls, the select board. The select board ultimately just carved out a piece for the society. So the historic society doesn't have a lease on everything from that beautiful tree I described, like down to Cambridge Street. They just kind of have a piece of it. And so there is a parcel of property that's not ours and it's the town's. And it's under the control of the select board and it's outside the lease with the historic society, if this makes sense. And though that lease though designates this area for future parking expansion, because that was contemplated as necessary. The language in the lease actually says that the school committee, given the understanding that the needs of the schools and the dynamics of schools change from time to time. The school committee may need from time to time to claim some parking and to repurpose some parking. There is an agreement in the lease that I think it's twelve spaces or something are made available to the historic society. But as I read the lease, it also kind of preserves the right for us to, if you will, take that back. But I, I say that very quickly because it's a practical matter. We obviously want to be good neighbors and if we're going to renovate the Carriage House, if we're going to bring traffic onto the site. The right thing to do is to provide some parking and to do it in the way that was always contemplated. So there's certainly been no conversation with the historic society about saying we're taking your parking. So I want to be very clear about that. But it's much more about saying, because we're kind of looking at common areas, what can we do to find a solution that works? Essentially, the solution that TAPPE presented last week kind of takes that parking lot that exists today. Right in front of the Carriage House or in back of, depending upon how you want to consider it, and almost kind of duplicates it. There's a lot of slope. There's, there's quite a bit of grade there and it's sort of connected with a drive. That's one approach. The exciting thing is that the society had engaged with an architect and landscape architect. That looked at a kind of different approach, different design approach, but in the same area, that actually produces much more parking. But it, it does this by sort of flattening the area, larger retaining wall, et cetera. So these, these are sort of the weeds that aren't really appropriate for this meeting. But that's exactly the kind of thing that I think we'd have to explore in design development, which is, okay, we gotta provide more parking. Here was sort of the TAPPE idea. Here was the society's idea. Do we take one and advance it? Is there a compromise and so forth? That's a long answer, but I don't know how many spaces there are at Ambrose.
About fifty.
My point is just I, I would want us to make sure that we're very clear about how many spaces Ambrose needs on an average day. And then I don't think they should be losing any as a result of this project, but I would just want to make that clear. Uh, so everyone has an understanding and there's the ability to plan for that operationally for the school. All of a sudden, if you're losing tenured parking spaces, that's not, not a fun thing to find out on the first day back to school.
So I can offer this, that this project is not about taking spaces away, but actually adding parking to accommodate increased use. I've made a point over the past, you know, few days since school has been in session. When I'm in the area, I, and I just did this last week, I, I will drive onto the Ambrose campus and just kind of look back there. I never see more than two or three cars parked in that little lot behind the Carriage House. And when I do see those two or three cars, I see more than two or three open spaces in the lot. So that just may be a reflection, you know, that somebody parked there because the lot was full at another time. So we have to look at this carefully. My point is if you go there during a regular school day, you're not going to see that that lot is full. Cause if that was the case, then that speaks to a, a different issue, which is we need to look even harder at some supplemental parking.
Right. The lot next to the Carriage House, parents have been told not to park in.
That's right.
But parents have been told not to park in at Ambrose. That's why you don't see people parking there.
Ah, got it.
So.
When we were visiting the site with, I think with, with, with TAPPE or maybe it was some of the early schematic design. Jay actually joined us out there and what I appreciate about sort of our longer term veterans on EFPC is they, they have some institutional memory. Do you want to just say a word about some of the investments that were made, like in electrical service when we did Ambrose and back in two thousand and six?
Ambrose, we put conduits in from the street all the way down the new driveway to the Carriage House. And knowing that something was going to happen at one time, that was a change order to the Ambrose. So those, there's no reason to go backwards. And I believe the, the water main also is within thirty, forty feet of the Ambrose too, I mean of the Carriage House. So that's in good shape. We're not going all the way to the street. I don't even know if they reflected that in their latest budget. I was looking through it quickly to see if they made those changes, but I think they still have the. The conduit, uh, everything going to the street for the services, for telephone and electric.
They picked it up. They picked it up. So I, I just, I want to thank Mr. Nardone because he just saved, he saved us a bunch of money on this virtual project. Because in the original version, the electrical engineer, and, and I, any engineer would have made the same assumption, given what the building looks like. There's an overhead line that goes to Sanborn, but the initial recommendation was bring in a new overhead electrical service. And Jay said, why would we do that? There's a conduit right there. Just pull one more conductor and.
Yeah. Before we paved, we put that in to, no, I think this has always been in the works to do something with that Carriage House. From oh six when we did the Ambrose, there's always been something in the works.
Do you have any, do you have any remarks just in the business right now about construction cost escalation? I mean, I think that's on the mind of a lot of school committee members and, you know, there, there's elements of construction we read about. Like plywood went up three hundred percent and then came down sixty percent.
I was going to say, but back down.
What's that?
I said, but it's back down.
It's ten, it's gonna start trending down. I mean, I, I don't think if we put out to bid right now, that would work that budget. But I think it will come, it is trending back down, but we are up two, three hundred percent on, on raw materials, copper, steel. And labor's hard to get too. The interest is going to be, not be as interesting to bid that as it will be hopefully next year. By the time drawings are done and everything's ironed out. So again, it's a smaller job. It's going to bring in a different group of contractors. It's going to bring in the people like the, the McCall addition, not the heavy hitters that are going to be after Lynch. So you're going to get these, that group that does fire stations and small jobs all around to bid the Carriage House. It's kind of like their warehouse, to get in quick jobs and get out, not to linger on a, on a Lynch type project. So it might be more attractive to some of these people to get in and get the job done. You know, Lynch, they're in for the long run.
Yeah.
Between site and everything else, and it's a tough site. Just looking through, I think I'm eight, through eight of the proposals so far. And just the ideas of how to set that school are all over the board. I mean funky designs, everything else, so.
Just accessing the site with materials and lay down areas.
Yeah. The logistics is going to be a nightmare to write the logistics plan for that.
Challenge. It's going to be a challenge.
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 Challenge, it feels a little nightmarish.
Nightmares will come later. It's a challenge.
It's going to be tough.
It is.
In terms of, in terms of timing, how this may play out? If, if, if the school committee wishes to designate the Carriage House as the future permanent home. Just remind the committee, what we're asking for is, you know, a modest amount of money to kind of take this concept, take it one more step. To, to address, for instance, the concerns of Ms. Bergstrom. And, and other, you know, questions that may be coming up from the community about, you know, particular issues. I know there, there's been a particular question about foundation, for instance. So like if either we have the answer or we don't, and if that's something we need to evaluate, you know, we look at that. In terms of timing, if this should be funded through fall town meeting. Design development is not a terribly lengthy exercise for a project like this. I can imagine the, the design team would be ready to go sometime in November. I can imagine it's like a November, December, January exercise. And the outcome of that is important in terms of timing as we think about spring. And if, if this project and we need to have conversations about how to pay for it. It seems the one obvious candidate would be some measure of a debt exclusion override. But whether it's expressly for this or if it's bundled with something else, like we just did last spring, you know, we had a major flood mitigate, the most expensive. You know, last flood mitigation project was tied to an investment in Morocco and the response for that was very strong. So, you know, that was all in, forgive me, it was eleven million, right? Ten point something. Morocco, trying to, Morocco was three point six and the flood mitigation piece I thought would be up to ten. We're bonding those on different schedules, but I want to say all in, it was around thirteen or fourteen million dollars. Do I have that about right? If we add those two projects together, something like that. Looking at a former FinCon member, but I think I'm close. So, you know, at six million dollars, is there an interest or appetite to, to bundle this with something and what might that be? You know, if you're watching the select board meeting, you know, there's strong interest in an important comprehensive renovation of the transfer station. But we also need, and there's clearly support for that at the select board table. But we have some significant needs for HVAC projects for the firefighters. We've got a lot of HVAC and air quality work to do at Town Hall for our municipal employees over there. And of course, that's another building that public accesses, you know, routinely. So I think for us to take this next step and really sharpen our pencils and be confident about this number and what it represents. Would really help us in a conversation with select board, FinCon, and ultimately town meeting. Around, you know, some spring question. And we, we could be ready as early as that. This obviously requires a broader conversation with folks who aren't here with us tonight and the first to acknowledge that. But if we were to pull that off by spring or summer, I think we can meet the, the schedule that TAPPE outlined last week. Any scenario that moves Dr. Hackett and his team out of this building. Before we're building Lynch can be terribly helpful to us in terms of some measure of swing space. And, you know, we're getting a lot of questions from architects who've been on the site and who've submitted proposals. They're, they're very interested to, to understand what kind of swing space we have here and they're intimating that something may be necessary. Certainly if we put, you know, if we increase the size of Lynch by eight percent, we're tipping the scale kind of the wrong way. And I thought Vivian made an interesting point last week at the meeting at the high school when we talked about modular classrooms. This idea that if in fact it should be determined, and we have a, a long way to go before we know this. But if it should be determined that really the simplest best approach for a new Lynch is to move the entire student body out. And build a new building like we did for VO, having this first floor available would be huge. And yet it doesn't accommodate all of the Lynch student body. But we have an opportunity to bring modulators on site and some cost avoidance because we can still use this space. So her comment about certain accessory spaces being in the building that can work to our advantage, I really hadn't thought about it at that level of detail. All just important things to be thinking about. The challenge still remains. We have a much clearer focus of what central office could look like at Carriage House than we do at Lynch. And that's unfortunately just sort of inescapable. Because one is a very kind of schematic, but comprehensive design with a cost estimate. And the other is much more of a, a master plan concept. Although I do appreciate Jay making the point that the proposals we're getting from architects make clear. This is like building a ship on a, it's like building an elementary school in a bottle is what it's like. Yeah.
It is.
So I actually had, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, along the line of timelines, could you also explain so that we all understand? The timeline, if we, if we were looking at including central office in Lynch. Because I know that we have to make a decision by October one. And, but then we also have the information that the MSBA will be making a decision on whether or not to include that by September twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. So could you just go over the ramifications of that, the timeline and the ramifications?
And again, I would ask both Jay and Frank to weigh in on this. But the MSBA is a, it's a large organization and it's a very, I call it a modular organization because I like to talk about their modules. You know, and the steps of the process, whether it's eligibility or feasibility and within feasibility, one module after the other. So there are many boxes to be checked, it steps along the way. It will be one of the first exercises when we do build the design team is to get on the space program. You all know what a space program is now because we've talked about it, certainly ad nauseam with respect to central office. But we have to have a space program for the rest of the elementary school. And so it's the space program that the architect needs to even begin to do the work. So how does this building evolve? What, how, how can we place this building on the site? So really the first two pieces are going to be understanding the site, the opportunities on the site, wetlands, the hundred year floodplain, et cetera. And then understanding the space program so that they can begin to solve the problem. So the, this deadline from Hill is simply because it is, you know, if we were talking about something that might increase the size of the building by point five percent. Or maybe one percent, I don't think it would be as big of a deal. This is a consequential decision because it has a real impact on how that, on the space program and how the design may evolve. I, I must tell you, I, I'm, I was not the only one who pushed back a little bit on the MSBA when they shared with us the date. You know, they said it, it, it likely won't be until September of twenty-two, just because a lot of time would have expired by then. But, you know, that, that's what they're holding to. My understanding is they will expect, just as when you go through feasibility, they expect you to look at multiple sites and multiple options. What they've indicated to us is that, you know, we're certainly welcome to include it in the program and make some progress towards that. But we ultimately have to make a presentation to them. We have to request it basically and say why we think the best fit is at Lynch. They will want to know what other options we looked at and they need to, to be convinced that it makes the most sense at Lynch. And then back to Dr. Hackett's point earlier, not at the expense of the educational program and the assembly of spaces. The quality of that, you know, how that building will perform. So essentially, I guess the project team's going to do a lot of work to try to make the case. But they've cautioned us, you know, that sometimes they say no.
I would just add to that, I think it's almost flipping what you said. They don't want anything that's going to impact the school negatively. That is their priority. That's the business they're in. It will be our job to prove to them that central office in Lynch does not compromise anything with the site. Anything with security and anything with the educational program. So it's, it's, in my experience from other projects, it's, it is relatively rare. That they allow that unless you're talking about a, you know, a fifty acre site that you're, that you're coming out of ground new on. That serves other purposes. They funded things like, or they have supported projects that have included community centers, for example. Or, or senior, senior kind of not living, but center. I've seen them do that in different communities. Obviously that community is paying for that. But that's again, fifty acres of, of land to spread out on, a lot of community support. But it will be, it, it's not an easy, it will not be an easy hurdle to get them to agree to have central office there.
And so just to get to that point though, to make the case to them, you sort of have to show them. You have to show the MSBA that this isn't negative and negatively impacting. So there's a lot of work to do, right? To get to that point and to show them. If they say no, then there is some redesign work that has to be done because now you're taking that chunk out. Now, I have to assume that project teams who approach this issue with the MSBA already have. I mean, a good architect and a good design team has a plan B in mind. You don't, you, otherwise you're just unprofessionally almost putting all your eggs in one basket. So I would have to assume if we opt to say we'd rather it go to Lynch. That as the diet, design is evolving, our design team would certainly be aware there's the prospect that they're going to say no. So in which case, you know, we have to do without the, the design in some measure changes. But then we find ourselves sort of back where we are today, which is we need to find a permanent home for central office and a year has gone by. And escalation has gone by and, you know, the Carriage House has deteriorated yet a little bit more. That's the best I can answer the question about.
I think you have to take into consideration too, when they're designing, putting the office there is a square footage on the main level. It's, it's like if you were looking at the McCall addition, three levels, you're only, you know, it, it's a nook stuck on the side of the building. You're not going to have three story central offices going up. So for them to place central office into that and just looking at how difficult it is now. That's a clear eight percent square footage that they have to, maybe they can go over it with a second floor. But it's going to be into, it's going to be sizable.
In other words, it's vying for primetime space.
Exactly. They, they, they have to fit that onto the lot. So they, they really need to know that, I think, going in or pretty close to it. If it was a three story building and we were doing two rooms on each floor going up, you can almost put it anywhere. But to, to sit that on the first floor is, is going to be a diff, a tough job on that site.
And why would it have to be on the first floor? The Carriage House wouldn't be on front floor.
Uh, it would need an elevator because it's accessible.
Right.
Wouldn't share the elevator with the school, so it'd need its own elevator.
Right.
Otherwise you'd have a corridor kind of loading into, and you'd have people coming into an entrance in the school and going up to the offices. It was on the second floor. So it'd have its own entrances, its own staircase, its own elevator. It really needs to sit on the first floor to be cost effective.
And so for.
Do a two sided elevator with lock offs and key cards? Just curious.
No, you, you, it's all a good point, but you're putting the elevator instead of central. You'd be sticking it to one side unless you put the offices in the center of the school, which is really bringing all the traffic into the same doors. It's not even a separate entrance. It's not even a separate entrance.
Right.
Anything's possible, but it's something that they have to design to.
Right.
And know, you know, if that was a huge site, it would be no problem at all. Just a tough site to begin with.
Given what we know about Lynch today, so 91-ish thousand square feet, if you just say it's, if you say it's a three-story school, kind of like VO, although I reckon the top floor of VO is not quite as big as the others. But, you know, if you just divide that into thirds and say it's about 30,000 square feet per floor, if you looked at Central Office and said, okay, it's eight, call it 8,000 square feet. We're not going to put you on three stories, but maybe, you know, a chunk of it could be on the main level and a chunk could be above, so that's 4,000 each. So that's 4,000 square feet out of a floor plate that's 30. So that's still, you know, that's over 10%, right, of a floor. And these early kind of concepts that the architects are sharing with us in their proposals, without question, everyone's already looking at multi, you have to look at a multi-story solution. There's literally like no other way to do it to, you know, preserve the building we have. You know, I'm sorry, I was stepping on you.
That's okay. I was, I thought it was interesting what Dr. Hackett had said about does not impact the school negatively regarding Lynch. And I think our job is to make sure we don't impact the schools, you know, our entire district negatively. So I do think there is a, you know, we have to consider, you know, the trade-offs. You know, some of the observations that I'm hearing and differences in, you know, I'd set up front that for me, it felt stacked in one direction. Not meaning that in a negative way. You know, that on one hand, we're looking at existing footprints, existing buildings. And on the other, we're looking at a building of a certain size or a building of a bigger size. So it's a bigger footprint on a small space. And so, you know, that was one of the things that I was considering when I thought about this. And the other, you know, as you just mentioned, was this notion of displacing academic space. You know, so we're not, we're not saying let's add on to the side of Ambrose or let's take part of Ambrose and put something in there. It's an existing footprint. So it's really about, as I'm hearing, it's about the usage and the traffic that may come through there and whether the sequencing of the timing is going to, you know, work out and things. And I guess that brings me to wondering, you know, you know, what our thoughts are around the carriage house. Should we not do it? You know, because we could, you know, we could rehab it and rent it to someone. But that seems like a worse option because then it's not kind of school, district, people using the place that, you know, if a daycare is in there or whatever, it goes back to some other use. You have more traffic at less convenient times, at least based on the premise of Central Office might arrive or not during peak rush drop-off time. You know, or the, or you use it for the Central Office or you surplus it, which I know is an option out there. My sense is that it's not a, I don't, I don't know. I guess, for me, I feel like that's not really an option. That, I know I wouldn't want to see the building be, you know, destroyed or put lots of money into maintaining it as an empty shell. So then it comes back to, you know, what do we do with the building? And so that just, you know, in my mind, besides all the space constraints. I'll also just note, I thought Tape's presentation was very good, with one exception, which Michelle, you caught when I repeated it, which was the lockdown issue. I think you're right on that as I reflected on it. You know, that, you know, if there was a significant event happening at Ambrose, I think it would affect that site as well. So I think that's, that was more of a red herring. I think that the, you know, I think the safety concerns that Mr. Nixon had talked about around really building a completely separate building inside of a building, you know, really equate to a cost thing. Because I think wherever we do it, we'll make sure that, you know, there's a separate entrance, a separate, you know, access to all points of the building and all of that. And so it's, you know, I feel like it kind of nets out on that one. And I would, I would take the, in my analysis of it, I would take the lockdown situation just off the table because I think you're right. Yeah, I think it's totally an issue at either place. So anyway, those are just my thoughts on the two different things. Oh, and last, let me just one more. On the parking, because I think we shouldn't take spaces away from anyone. And I think that any design we do should provide the amount of parking that is needed for the building. So, and in fact, if we could squeeze a few extra spaces in, that would probably help accommodate some of these concerns. You know, I will say, you know, when I think about, it's hard for me to envision, you know, the Lynch site, and actually, at some point, we can take it offline, but I'm kind of curious about what this part is, that, uh-
You should hold, you should hold that up. That's now a public document, and I can tell you. So Mr. Ho, I didn't know you were going to have that. You are holding the Lynch site. That's from our GIS survey.
Yeah.
What's white is a well field, an old well field at the water department. That's not our property.
The field is on that, okay?
It's most, there's a little bit of field on there. There's a lot of woods on there, and also the floodplain also cuts through that. So, you know, one of, one of the things, this is a great sort of visual diagram because I think this is not the first time people will see this as we get into feasibility. We will have to evaluate whether we can, can we feasibly take a slice of that that's outside a conservation area, that's outside a hundred-year floodplain and can in some measure help us sort of site the building. But that very site diagram that Mr. Hopcroft's holding is what we looked at when we looked at the high school feasibility study. And in particular, we did look at that well field site. And it was basically, this was ruled out. That had so many issues attached to it that it basically wasn't helpful. Am I oversimplifying, Jay?
No, you're right. The building is right here. But yeah, so prior to even seeing this report, I thought this entire area was the Lynch site.
Ah.
And so the Lynch site, like, lost a third of it or a quarter of it. And so the thought of, you know, adding 8% to a building, whatever the building is, and by the way, co-locating this building and another building, I don't even know. Like, we stick it over here. And I'd be curious to see some of those things. But, and then adding, you know, additional parking. It's just, it's, you know, we have good architects, so if that's what we do, that's, you know, they'll find ways to do it, but, but anyway.
Lots of creative thinking coming in there.
Okay. And then I guess I would just comment that I think there is interest in, and I believe we had expressed this at last week's meeting, that there is an interest in just seeing a side-by-side comparison as much as we can of how Central Office costs versus the Lynch, inclusion in a Lynch Elementary School cost, going down the rip, understanding that that is hard to predict at this point.
Say the last part again.
Understanding that that is, that a lot of assumptions will be going into that, soft assumptions. But there's been interest expressed around that.
I think in more detail than that report is.
More detail than the presentation or more detail than the report that's been shared with the school committee? Because there's a whole, there's a conclusion section in the report that seeks to do just what you're describing. So maybe off, I mean, maybe offline, what I might just ask is if I direct the school committee members back to the, I'm talking about the 130-page report. I think you'll have links to that. Actually, if you don't, if you don't mind, Mr. Cop, just hold, turn that page and hold your binder up there. You had some-
There's two. There's a summary here.
The summary.
And then in here, there's a section on cost, some of the comparison. But obviously, the hypothetical Lynch school doesn't have a lot of detail.
Yep.
Right.
So there's a lot of words in the report that sort of speaks to that. The words weren't sort of on the screen for obvious reasons in the PowerPoint. So I might ask the committee to take a look at the, it's literally called the summary of pros and cons. And so there's schedule, there's cost, design opportunities and challenges. Take another look at that, and if there are any specific questions or if you feel like there's some missing information, let us know. And then we'll get back to Tape and, you know, see what we can pull the, or Hill, depending upon, you know, what the nature of the question is.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Nixon one more question while we have him here?
Yes.
So since I've learned everything I know about construction from Mr. Nixon, while we still have you here on this topic. Is there any, Mr. Nordon can probably maybe answer this better, too. This is a very short timeline. And all I know about construction right now is what I know from residential remodeling and that those timelines are doubling and tripling in many cases in residential construction for this kind of work. Do you see these timelines as accurate?
They are accurate.
Even given what we know about what's going on?
Well, I think what you have to take in the time for design. So we're not going into this until spring, maybe out to bid in June. You know, if everything went great, I don't know. And material is an issue. But the group of contractors out there that take on these small projects, a lot of the small projects are on hold.
Right.
So there's contractors that are in, fit into all these different schedules. The fire stations aren't being built.
Right.
There's a lot of stuff. So they're looking. So the niche is out there to do this. If you were to say, put this out to bid next week, I'd absolutely correct. There's no way this is going to go. But if you spend the time to get it all, and really, if it goes out to bid and it doesn't hit the market, there's no harm to table it either for six months. The drawings are done, you have a budget. It doesn't hit the budget. They have to bond it, so they're not going to take it on if they can't. Not like a house where they just start the job, take a deposit, and leave.
Right.
Someone's going to put up a good-sized bond and then start the job. So there is, there's either going to be no interest, which will know at the bid time because no one's going to show up, and then table the job. I mean, the only thing that affects is the swing space for Lynch if it was taken in that we needed the swing space.
Right. And I guess that was my concern of understanding the timelines and knowing what's happening in construction right now. Is it, is that part of this even advantageous to doing the carriage house? Are we going to end up essentially on the same timeline as we would if we built it at Lynch?
We could. We could. We don't know what's going to happen over the winter.
Yeah.
Except that material stuff is starting to move. It's very slowly, but it is, it's better than two months ago. So, and it is going to take time to get a budget and get it approved and get drawings made and get a bid package. We won't be seeing this until, you know, early spring at the least. But I would be more like a June bid date. I don't know what you're expecting.
Well, and I think Tape said in their report, they, excuse me, in their presentation, I think they talked about summer slash fall '23. You know, in my mind, I do try to pad schedule early. So I like to think of fall '23 only because in my mind, that's easy to then say, okay, that's two years ahead of Lynch, in terms of when Lynch would be done. But there's another important date to consider, and that is for, you know, a year and a half now, our target has been, in order to hit fall '25 for Lynch, we're assuming we're bidding the work. We're bidding Lynch sometime between like January or February of '24. So the point is that, you know, so that's the beginning of the '23 school year. Our current schedule was that we would have Lynch students in the building in the fall of '23. So, but this is all a little, you know, this is subject to change. This is why you want to go through feasibility, you get the OPM on, you get the architects. And remember, we lost some time last year between Thanksgiving and Christmas over the whole kind of design enrollment discussion with the MSBA. So the outcome of that was good because they significantly increased the design enrollment. But we lost some time. And back to that modular organization, if you pause for a moment to have a conversation, it's, you literally, like, you get taken out of line. Some other district comes up and takes your spot. And that's what happened with us. That's why we saw a delay, almost a, I want to say a seven-week delay on the OPM side. And then we have to go through the OPM selection process, and now we're to the architects. We really have one more opportunity at this stage to claw back a little bit of time, and it remains to be seen if we will. So a year and a half ago, our hope was that we would have had the architects selected by July, that they would have been onsite in August, looking at the site. And we'd be having visioning meetings, you know, kind of around the same time as starting school. That obviously hasn't quite played out. Maybe that's okay because everybody's primary focus is getting back in school, and we still have issues that we're working through on a daily basis. But we lost some time. We're going to have to work hard to find a way to claw it back. So my point in just saying that is if there were some, if Carriage House wasn't ready by the summer of '23, I don't see that as a problem. If it's ready by fall of '23, that's frankly no earlier than when I thought it might be ready anyway. And if it's not ready till, you know, December of '23, I don't see how that's a problem for the Lynch project either. But we're just, like, we're ahead of ourselves, obviously. Other decisions need to be made. But I, in other words, it's a little squishy. I think there's some flexibility there.
Right. But we're looking at the advantages of Carriage House versus Lynch. And if timeline isn't an advantage either, then I'm trying to just work out what the clear advantages are to be able to communicate to the community of one project over the other.
Right. In other words, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is one needs to have a really clear understanding. Not only will we need some measure of swing space for Lynch, but when exactly do we need it? So we will be making great progress on the new Lynch Elementary School with kids in that building because we'll be in programming and schematic design, right, and conceptual design. And we have to go through a whole funding exercise, and we'll go to Town Meeting. We're going to have to have a debt exclusion override. So, you know, just a couple of dates to remind people of. Like, we built this incredible new elementary school up on the hill at VO, and it was open in September of '13. That building opened in September of '13. The debt exclusion override vote to pay for that project was on January 11th of 2011. My point is there's a lot of work that gets done before you actually go and ask for the money to actually pay for the project. And when that gets funded, everything just starts going like, it feels like 100 miles an hour.
And we need to approach the Lynch knowing if this is available for swing space or not.
Yeah.
It can't be up in the air. It needs to be the designing around that, changes their whole look at the project. Are they, you know, adaptive reuse of some of it? Do we have to put modules on that site? There's a lot to take into account. This would, a decision one way or another would at least direct the architects in which way they're going.
Right. Which is why it's important to really understand the clear timelines on the carriage house and whether they're realistic or not. Because if we can't get that project done to get people out of here in time, then the advantage of swing space here is lost as well.
Right.
So I wouldn't want to get into that project and then say, but we still need to rent millions of dollars worth of swing space because we can't get Central Office out of here.
Exactly.
Well, so I think you heard, I mean, we could certainly, if there's a specific schedule question, you want to circle back with Tape on, I think we have time to do that. I think they put forward a schedule that, in their estimation, is reasonable. And, you know, I appreciate Jay's sentiment as well. I certainly think it is. Thank you for the question.
Anything further? Otherwise, I will move us on to our next agenda item.
Jay, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks, Jay.
Appreciate it.
I really appreciate it. So next item on our agenda is a capital and building planning update. And I will turn it over to Mr. Nixon and Dr. Hackett again to give us a brief update on the status of capital planning rankings looking toward Fall Town Meeting and building project status, and also an update on consideration of SRF funding towards addressing an HVAC project at the McCall Middle School.
You want to kick it off? You want me to kick it off?
I think you should kick it off, just as background.
So, thank you very much. I, so first of all, let me just talk briefly about some capital stuff that's already going on that we're aware of. So we are in the process of developing construction documents for the Morocco School, given the funding from Town Meeting, last Town Meeting. And that just entails, you know, confirming the scope, taking it from kind of conceptual recommendations into actual construction documents. So that work is going on right now. It's primarily around the roof repair or roof replacement and the electrical work at the building. And the goal from engineering and planning is to be ready for, to bid this work in the winter and then to have a contractor selected in the spring and to go through the whole means and methods of construction to be ready to go with actual work in the building first day of summer. So that's exciting. And our preliminary impression is that, we think that the numbers are actually going to come in quite favorably. I don't want to jinx that, but that tends to be, certainly, as we said a minute ago, it's not the case for a four-by-eight plywood. But, you know, there's other stuff we're looking to do at Morocco. And so it looks like the bidding climate is pretty favorable to us right now. Therefore- Therefore, I wanna go back to something that some members will recall from a year ago. We had previously sought funding from town meeting to replace as many handwashing sinks as we could at Morocco, 'cause they were the original steel cabinet sinks that were rust, rusting and rotting out. We really appreciate that funding. So we were able to replace the sinks in kindergarten and in first grade, but, but really kind of only in that portion of the building. I, somewhat ironically, those were the sinks that were in the worst shape. So we still have some more work to do. We also have some educational spaces for which we have no handwashing sinks, which has long been a concern of mine. Um, and, and we'd like to fix that. Um, that obviously is a little more expensive, 'cause you've gotta bring water and waste lines to them. So, I've had some conversations uh, with Meg White in engineering and planning about how we can, you know, sort of make that happen. And it is our intention to do that, to basically uh, um, to get it, get our architect back on board and see what, I mean, we already have a lot of good information in terms of scoping out the full sink replacement in the building, 'cause it was really just a function of what they cost that limited and how much we could do. But we will probably have a conversation with them, getting them back in the building, and see what we can do to kinda scope out those other areas, till we can begin to get a sense of cost. We, the, the way that article was worded at town meeting deliberately gave us um, this kind of opportunity. We even addressed some plumbing needs in the building. So, can't tell you, you know, what the cost of that would be, but I'm excited that I think we've got enough resources there. We can continue to make progress on something that um, very important to me anyway, and I think it's important to all of us. So, um, that was helpful news um, to share.
Can you remind us of what the cost of the um, kindergarten and first grade replacement sinks was? If you?
I'm gonna be really impressed if you put this out.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna be impressed if you remember that. It was-
I think it was.
I remember addressing it.
I think it was around, I wanna say eighty, I wanna say it was eighty-six thousand dollars.
I was gonna say under a hundred.
It was under a hundred. It was around eighty-six. That sounds like a lot of money, is a lot of money, but just to be clear, there, we have hazardous materials. Unfortunately, we have asbestos-containing materials that are on the underside of the sinks. I don't know why, but it's there. Um, so there's, you know, yeah, one has to contain the area when you demolish that, and then you take it off-site. Um, and remember as well, so these were some of the more expensive sinks. So in our kindergarten classrooms, we have the double basin, um, which we obviously replaced, and we heard from our first-grade teachers that handwashing just takes so long that it was actually frankly interrupting instructional time. So we doubled up in the first-grade rooms as well. Um, but I will circle back and let you know how much that actually was. So, I wanna pivot real quick to some capital news. Capital planning, um, we've been busy. Uh, we have voted projects to bring forward to Fall Town Meeting out of the Capital Stabilization Fund, which is the fund that we go to for things like dump trucks and roads and sidewalk repair and, you know, curb cuts and bridges and so forth. Um, we have not yet actually voted our priorities out of the Building Stabilization Fund, though we, we have ranked the, um, the projects. There were twelve projects that came forward to the Capital Planning Committee. Um, and based on our, our policy, which is we look at how much money we have available, and we, we don't wanna spend all of it, we, we wanna take some measure of conservatism. We believe that this year we've got about one-point-five-four million dollars to spend. You know, that, that may change, uh, which I'll get to in a second. Um, but we have ranked, um, I think it's seven, yes, seven projects so far are a priority for the committee that fall within that funding um, limit. And I'm pleased to share that that includes the top school priority, which was the restoration of the McCall School facade. I wanna be, let me just, I've already said it, I'm gonna say it again. Capital has not yet voted this list, so this is, this is nothing sort of, you know, suitable for front-page news. Um, but we were certainly, I'm, I'm appreciative that that was a priority. There seems to be some interest in and support for the, uh, the, the schematic design for the Lincoln School Chiller as well. Um, and the Lincoln site work um, is something that may ultimately get support. That's where we are right now. Um, so, a quick word just on the Lincoln site work. Should this get um, voted by Capital and advanced to town meeting, then I think uh, to the chair and the superintendent, then we need to find a way to kind of bring that scope of work to the school committee, 'cause y'all actually haven't seen that yet. That's very kind of conceptual. And what we asked for was some funding to kinda take that to the construction document level. Um, so we look forward um, to doing that. So, with respect to what else remains on the list, that includes things like um, the fifty-seven thousand dollars we've asked for for the Carriage House, um, the um, investigation and design for the McCall and Ambrose Roof. Um, the, the project that's sort of on the bubble right now is one that actually this committee didn't really talk about, which is to replace the HVAC controls at McCall Middle School in the, predominantly the library wing, but um, Dr. Hackett, is it, is it spaces beyond the library wing that you're aware of?
Yes, I believe so.
So, when McCall, when the library wing was added on to McCall around nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, there was a comprehensive renovation of the whole building. And at that time, pneumatic controls were installed to control heat, fresh air intake, and by pneumatic, these are lines that literally use air pressure or vacuum to, you know, control devices. Um, today, that's really out of favor. We tend to see like direct digital controls, electronic controls, uh, but that was in favor at the time. Some years ago, DPW began to hear complaints that rooms were either too hot, too cold. It was becoming difficult sometimes to control the, the, the fresh air balance. And what DPW was able to determine is that the pneumatic lines themselves that carry that, that air pressure or vacuum have basically dried out and they've cracked. So, it, they're, they are literally like a leaking sieve, and so they're, it's becoming increasingly difficult um, to, to, to control. And so, there were several options that were evaluated. The Energy Management Committee got involved maybe uh, three or four years ago, um, and advocated for a pilot study that looks to basically bring in some electronic controls. That was prioritized by Capital funded by Town Meeting two years ago, I think. It was around fifty thousand dollars. And so, they did bring in a contractor, put in an entirely different sort of electronic control system with the idea that we're gonna see how this works. And my understanding is it actually works pretty well. This is of interest, should be of interest to the committee, because this was not a project that we discussed at the school committee table. Um, we, I don't think we really understood at the time that DPW would be looking to, to bring this forward, um, but they did. And I wanna be clear, that this is, this is a, a project that's important. It merits attention, um, and it absolutely needs to get done. The cost to, based on the results of the pilot, to update the electronic, or excuse me, to, to update the controls, uh, to a, a digital control approach is, um, we estimate around three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, DPW has helpfully come in and said, just based on this philosophy, this approach, um, the work would naturally be broken down into zones, so, you know, twelve classrooms here, eight classrooms here. I mean, that's the way you would naturally do it. And so, where we stand right now with Capital, um, with the resources that we think we have, we don't have quite enough to cover a three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar project. We're sitting on about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars that's left. So that's not enough to get us over the finish line. Pete did come in last week, and he's presented some options that kinda break this down over a two-year or three-year period, make it a two-year or three-year project. So you may spend a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in year one of three, or you might spend a hundred-and-fifty-six, I think, in year one of two. And uh, that was at the Capital Committee's request. So we were discussing that last week. Um, I don't know yet where this will go, but I appreciate that those options were brought forward. Now, related to this issue and, and why it's presented as it is on the agenda, Dr. Hackett has, has also, you know, sort of creatively brought forward this idea that perhaps we could use S R two funds, um, which are, seem to be really well in line for a project of this nature, not necessarily to cover all of it, uh, but perhaps to cover year one. Um, and so, so we're looking at that. Uh, before I say, I, I, I feel like I should stop talking now, and, and this is maybe appropriate time to ask you, Dr. Hackett, to say a few words about that.
Sure. Well, thank you. Uh, first of all, I just wanna say, in, in talking to Pete, and have had a chance to talk to Mr. Little, Mr. Lynn a little bit, the work at McCall with the pilot project has made a tremendous difference. It's, the, the, the units are really successful. It's a great approach. It's essentially gutting and redoing the insides of the units. The ability to control the outside dampers, um, through electronically right now, on, on the old units, we don't have any way to even know if they're working, because they're not tied in, right? So, they have to be manually kinda pinned the outside to get, to bring fresh air in. Uh, with this system, they can completely control those, so that we're not bringing too much cold air in if it's really cold out, and then you just can't bring the room up to temp. Um, so, it, it's a great project. It makes ton of sense. Uh, there's about fifty units left. There's six on the basement, uh, basement units, uh, twenty-four ground floor, uh, twelve on the second floor and eight on the third floor, and they're about six, they were about sixty-five hundred dollars a unit, but they've, uh, the price has gone up some. So, I mean, you know, from, from my perspective and just knowing in, um, having used federal funding uh, in the previous life, uh, spent uh, uh, the majority of federal funding um, on HVAC repair, because it, it's, it's a permanent fix, right? I mean, it's money that, it's one-time money, um, and to be able to make a difference over the long term to a facility is a, is a great use of it, if, if we can do it. Now, in just kinda working through the last few days, um, I do have a concern about making sure that we still leave ourselves enough in S R two and three, depending on how this breaks out, uh, to, to deal with our response and reaction to the experience we're having educationally right now. Um, and candidly, um, there's been some kinda last-minute decisions and changes from the Department of Education that have put, I think, a lot of stress on all, all public schools in our response to what do we do when students are in quarantine, very specifically talking about the idea of providing some kind of remote learning option, which we all remember in May, there was no remote learning option, and then in June, it was no remote. So we've heard all summer long until August twentieth, uh, if I'm being generous, the twentieth was a Friday, which I remember that coming out at about six o'clock at night, but anyway. Um, so, call it the twenty-third, but who's counting? About two weeks prior to school, in a, an FAQ, buried in quite, and I don't mean, I know I kinda do mean to be critical.
It was buried.
Buried in an FAQ.
It was buried.
Number eight, um, there was a little section that just talked about if students can access uh, their instruction remotely, virtually, then that will not count against them as an actual abs, day of absent. Well, that has s- severe implications that I'm not even sure the department had entirely thought, in fact, I know the department had not entirely thought through. Everything from students who, who need special services to um, school communities that just cannot provide that kind of access to, um, then you get into students who are in a school system who have a high absentee rate, because in fact, they've been fortunate enough to be in close contact six times in a row, no fault of their own, but, you know, those, the days count against them, and they count against the school system, so on and on and on and on. So, we've been working and scrambling, quite honestly, you know, that if we had known that this was a, this was a, an opportunity or an option, we could've, we could've known that in July even, we could've really, I believe, managed it and planned it well. Right now, we're, we are trying to figure out how to, how to manage it at all. And as you know, we talked about the last meeting, um, in executive session, um, we do have a memorandum of agreement that we still need to work through with the teachers' union. All this stuff is subject to negotiations, so um, that's the work that we also have to do kinda at the same time. That all just to say that there's gonna be a cost to us that we can't quantify right now to continue to operate through the rest of the school year to make sure we're providing students and teachers what they need uh, to deliver instruction effectively. And I'm, I'm, when I first started thinking this through, I was thinking we could maybe do the whole project, to Mr. Nixon just said a few, a little bit ago, is it really, I think now, I am comfortable saying that we can do, we can definitely do a portion of this project. The question is to whether we do the three, one year of the two-year plan or one year of the three-year plan. The numbers are pretty close, so I don't think that is a, is a big deal. And again, I, it would be nice to take our federal funding and get something of long-term value, um, that's gonna stay with us as a school department, uh, at least a piece of it, um, and then understanding that, you know, the rest of it, um, we just kinda need to be flexible with. So we have about three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars or so, three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars or so in S R two. That grant was written prior to my arrival, 'cause it was due, uh, smartly, written around, um, being able to provide um, support for students who, with special needs and special services, uh, anticipating, I think, the fact that we might be seeing an uptick in out-of-district replacements or additional service requests. S R three is due on October first. Um, we will need to uh, set aside, I believe it's twenty percent of S R three for um, academic support for students. I think it was ten thousand dollars of S R two was for social-emotional support for students, which, which we have done clearly. The system does that uh, very well. And then, the rest of the S R three, roughly, we're around seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars or so. We're talking now about maybe carving out a hundred-and-fifty of that total to approach the, the McCall project. So, I feel good about that for a lot of reasons. Um, I think it's the right thing to do.